Call no, she was her man.
Laura.
And I'll call her and see if she came by and look at that one.
Okay, would that be Daisy Farmer that I called?
Yeah.
The first time?
One, yeah, right next door to me, so there. I think I'm eight-ten, they'll probably be eight-twelve maybe, eight-oh-nine, eight-ten, eight-twelve. And it's all in Jefferson, she's a real charm that.
Okay, Nora and Jefferson.
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you.
Uh.
Yeah, I'm like, hey!
Rodney, can we have a, a, um, roll of pile please?
Rodney.
Yes, crap. Uh, Ms. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins here, Ms. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Robertson?
She's here.
Ms. Robertson?
She's up there somewhere.
Mr. Hill?
Well.
Dr. Julie?
Here.
Dr. Julie?
Here.
Mr. Edlund?
Here.
Uh, Ms. Burns?
She's in Tucson doing auditing today.
Okay.
May I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
I'll make a motion, second.
Okay, so Mr. Hopkins, hi, Mr. Hill?
Hi.
Ms. Cameron?
No.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Moore?
Hi.
Just going down the list, sorry about that.
Hi.
Ms. Moore?
Here, I mean, I.
I.
And Ms. Robertson? Pass this one to you.
Okay. If you would all stand and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're starting the, um, information items, and the first is discussion of the business item from the November regular board meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a short agenda that happens sometimes this time of year. You all received an email today, there'll be one additional agenda item that I'm hesitant to discuss because we haven't posted it for 24 hours, but it'll be under the personnel item, it's a positive, uh, agenda item, so I can talk about that obviously at our regular meeting on, on Wednesday. Business, let me go over that with you folks. We have one 301 payment that we overlooked when we approved all the other people today, or people. By the way, people receive their 301 payments, they came in last week, so people were picking them up from the office today. We, um, had to postpone that for about a month because, um, change in leadership, we had some, uh, challenges with having data support, uh, the payments, but we got that squared away. The, the person that want to have the board vote on, uh, Wednesday evening is Mr. Ogden, Robert Ogden, he's our, uh, Director of Food Services. Last year, uh, shortly before school started, uh, our culinary arts teacher, uh, moved out of town, and so Mr. Ogden, uh, taught culinary arts for a semester, uh, so he did not receive his, CTE, Career and Technical Education Certificate until halfway through the semester. So his payout will be one-fourth.
We didn't put the other teachers in the agenda, so that's why I left.
That's fine, yeah, and we didn't, uh, he didn't, uh, he only had, we're paying him one-fourth of what he would have earned because he was there half the year and only half that time is certified, and so that period of time, you can't receive, uh, 301 payment unless you have a certificate, so the recommendation for his fourth would be 293-64, so we'll ask the board to approve that under a business section. The next one is kind of odd, I've never had one quite like this before. Two board meetings, uh, prior to this, uh, week's board meeting, we had, uh, um, a board, um, policy update by the Arizona School Board Association. We adopted policy GCCA, the title of that policy is professional support staff sick leave, and the ASBA is recommending that that be, uh, deleted after they've supported. And the reason is because there's conflict in the policy. The policy was adopted just before family's first coronavirus, uh, Response Act was passed, it's a federal act, and so they want to pull it off until they can work it out and make sure it's, uh, in compliance with the federal law. The second policy they're going to pull off, and, and there's, there's this backup information, and I'm repeating here, is in, is behind the agenda item in your book, so I'm not telling you anything, it's not in your board book. The second policy they are recommending that we pull off is GCKA, which is professional support staff telecommunicating, and there with the, with the CARES Act, uh, employees starting in October 1st, I'm sorry, April 1st until December 31st have up to 80 hours of, we call it COVID leave. That means if they're, if they have symptoms and they're being tested, or if Mr. Edlund or I send people home because we're worried about their health because of the pandemic, uh, for 80 hours, they do not have to take leave from their, from their accrued sick leave. This is not in statute, this was something that a number of districts had asked ASBA to, uh, write about, and so they did, but now they're finding that multiple districts are doing something, it's legal, but it's significantly different, so they're wanting to remove that policy because basically it's being, uh, it's been trumped by just, trumped by people's decisions, by district's decisions, uh, to run the COVID, uh, COVID leave. Having not done this, I think we're safe in doing this, tonight can vouch, can stand for the first reading. When we adopt, we have to have a first reading and a second reading, and I would feel better tonight, tonight would stand as the first reading as the rejection of these two policies, and the vote would be Wednesday night to reject or maintain the policies. But, uh, there's, there's two pages of support material in the, in the board agenda for that item. Uh, the next agenda item is under business as well. It's approval to dispose of school property. Uh, one of the things when we're using taxpayers' dollars, we're very careful to follow, um, USFR, Universal System of Financial Record Keeping, uh, on procurement, and they also address disposal of property. School districts historically have a lot of stuff around because getting rid of it's, uh, kind of cumbersome. And we have a lady that we use occasionally about once or twice a year to help us with inventory of fixed items and making sure we're following USFR, name is Lupe Bandeen. She has, we have listed the following items, uh, and they're being recommended for disposal because they're outdated, they're obsolete, they're unsafe, or they're inoperable equipment. And that goes online to a federal, uh, site for disposal of public property. And the items that we're, uh, disposing of are listed, uh, on the subsequent pages. There's a bandsaw, which is a big saw, uh, it's a Delta, this is equipment, uh, and also a table saw, the make is Dayton. Those two items are backstage at the auditorium. And, yeah, there's pictures in there, those have not been turned on. I came here as business manager in the fall of 97, haven't been turned on since I've known Aho existed. So, uh, we're recommending disposal of those, and people can bid online. Moving on, the next item we're talking about getting rid of is 17 vertical file cabinets. Because of technology, we have some electronic file, but we still use paper file cabinets, but mostly for, um, often we use the space, we're using the horizontal file cabinets, and so, pardon me. We're advertising those 17 file cabinets, and there are various stages of wear and tear. Some of them have had a rough life, some of them have been pretty well cared for, just depending on where they were. Anybody wants to look at those, they're in the, they're, uh, we have them housed in the, uh, in the stadium. The, uh, next item is in the cafeteria, it's a slicer. This is something like you'd see in a delicatessen or you might see in a, um, grocery store, supermarket, butcher department, where they slice cold cuts and so on and so forth. The value of that is about $1,200, the other items are so old that we don't have a value for them. Uh, so we're recommending, uh, that to be bid. And you can see a picture of it there, if you want to open a deli in downtown Aho, that's a great thing to do. Then we have several pianos backstage, again, in the digest auditorium, there are two baby grands. They're both look like they've had, uh, a rough life, extremely rough life. Uh, one of them is not really operational, it's missing some parts, the other is more, more operational. I inspected them with Lupe, and I can't remember which one was which, uh, maybe I'll tell by looking at the picture. Anyway, right above the keyboard, one of them is missing a major piece, you can see it in the soundboard. Those are baby grands, uh, they're rough. One of this is not tuned, but sounds fairly respectable. Then there are two Baldwin pianos, in a day we call these consoles. They're not as high as a, as an antique, a tall piano, but they're taller than a con, than a, uh, I can't remember the size of it, they're, they're probably four feet, four and a half feet high, and they, again, people used to have pianos in classrooms before we had music programs, and a lot of primary teachers played the piano, and kids would sing and so on and so forth. That hasn't happened for a long time, so those are the items that we're recommending for, uh, sale on, on the bid. And this bid process is legal through USFR, people, and, and people are responsible for their own transport. Uh, they come here, our guys don't even have to help them load, uh, if they are desperate, because they usually pretty helpful people or some of those people, so, uh, it'll be a little bit of money we can put into, uh, capital. So those are things that are going to be recommended, uh, for sale. We also are asking for board approval to dispose of a white school bus. Uh, the white school bus broke down in Lukeville in the summer when Mrs. Conley was doing library work down there. It's, uh, this bus is, I think, in 2007. It's got 100,000 miles on it, which I personally think it should have lasted longer. It's got, uh, probably a repair bill between transportation and repair, I estimate at least $8,000 to $9,000. If the board approves the disposal of this bus, it'll be a trade-in for a, uh, for a newer bus, not as expensive as this was. There'll be another white bus. And if you recall, the reason we recommend white buses, they're safer than school vans. At one time, the district had a lot of vans, vans are top-heavy, they're not as rigid in case there's an accident, and they don't have dual wheels. So if the board approves the disposal of this, uh, white bus, which is basically a trade-in, on Wednesday night, we'll trade in on a, a new white bus. White buses cannot be used for a school route, they can probably get by once or twice, but you can't do it continually because they have no school bus markings. They don't have the stoplights, they don't have the, the stop sign, they're painted white. So anybody with a Class A driver's license can drive one, you don't have to have a CDL, the passion or a student endorsement, you can just, and this one's, this one is based, the one we're looking at, is based on a one-ton pickup chassis with a bus body, and, uh, it's a pretty decent bus for the price. And so we'll recommend that, uh, being a, uh, under disposal item as well. And that's all for business tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much, and the next item is a board discussion on potential school opening, COVID-19 committee.
When we talked last month, there was, um, interest expressed from the audience about the reopening of school because you folks were voting on that that night, and, um, I appreciate your folks listening seriously and taking this seriously. This is not, there's not an easy answer for this because it's not, uh, one side is perfectly right. I, there's, there's controversy on both sides, I'm not talking about controversy, or pardon, I'm not talking about politics. In my opinion, we're talking about what's best for boys and girls, um, our students. I, I worry about the environment our students are learning in. I'm, I believe that learning is, learning for kids is about building relationships between the teacher and the student. I also believe it's about relationships between children because they learn from one another. But I also fear, um, the COVID, um, virus. We've had eight deaths in Arizona of people under 20 years of age. Nine now. The youngest is one, was an eight, was a first grader, uh, or an eight-year-old, he was too much. And, uh, I had this discussion this weekend a lot with a family member, my oldest daughter's a teacher in Las Vegas, and she is furious that she can't have her kids with her because that's what she went into business for, and I hear that from educators often. So that, the people that came to the podium and talked, I respect their opinions, even if I didn't agree with them sometimes, because we want, we want to return to the good old days, and, uh, we've got this challenging phase of it. So the board had talked about at that meeting, having a, a committee that Mr. Edlund and I would work with to communicate what we're thinking about, to communicate where we are with reopening or not reopening and so on and so forth. So he and I talked, we've talked about this. I had sent messages to all employees, um, asking if they would be interested in serving on such a committee. So tonight, I would welcome your input, um, about, we did something like this early on, uh, in August, and we used this room, we probably had about 15 people.
Uh, 10 or 12 anyway.
Yeah, and we had, and one of the things that we wanted to do was put the word out in various parts of the community and have people understand why we had changed the vote from a hybrid system of school to a total online. And if you recall, that was shortly after the governor did his last executive order, and, um, Arizona wasn't doing well. Well, we've been all over the board with that since then. Right now, the term spike might be too harsh, but our neighboring districts in the north, they opened up sometime back, and they closed down last week because they had seven cases and they're smarter than we are. So what I was curious, if anybody had feelings about, let me ask some, some questions, pose some questions quickly that I had thought about, that we'd kind of talked about as well. Think about this, the size of a committee that you think would be effective. We have, do, do we try to get students in that committee? Do, obviously, community members, uh, number of parents, uh, number of business people. I would like to try with the board's support, having the executive director of the clinic, the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, to be a part of that, and part of the reason, as I recall what the board discussed at the last meeting, is twofold. We keep these people, and, and Mr. Edlund and I are talking about having a meeting a minimum of once a month, maybe even every three weeks, uh, to talk about where we are and look at where the pandemic is in Arizona and et cetera, et cetera. So, feedback, what, what are your ideas, what kind of thoughts do you folks have surrounding those? Or if you have questions you want me to approach that I didn't have, I'm open to suggestions. This is something, this is new for all of us folks, so, sure.
Just, I'm not sure if you guys know, we also have an on-campus safety committee that meets to discuss things that we see that need addressed to be prepared for kids to come back to campus. We have representative from primary, middle school, high school, a second, uh, high school that's got 10 years' experience serving on safety committees in California, also the, our director of maintenance and our director of food service, in addition to myself serve on that. We've met, we developed a list of things that needed address. We're meeting again this Wednesday, we'll go through that again to see how many of those items we've already checked off and any new items that we have to add to that committee, or to add to that list, I should say. So those are things that we already are taking steps on, on campus, that, uh, I don't know how many other people outside of here know, but we've, we've crossed off pretty much everything that was on that first list, and, uh, we've got a new list of things that I know I've got eight or 10 things that I've got written down for this meeting to go through. So that's just nothing on the safety committee on campus as well.
Have you asked, have you asked anyone to be on the committee?
Not other than staff, only staff.
But do you have?
I wanted to get you folks' input first. And what I would do with your input, I would probably start that tomorrow, start asking people tomorrow.
Dr. Julie keeps cutting out a little bit, can't quite hear what you're saying.
Uh, let me move just a hair closer. If I sit over here, can you hear me better? That's okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan asked if I had solicited any people to be on this committee, and my answer was only staff. And, uh, I solicited classified as well as certified, pardon me. We have seven, uh, certified people expressed an interest. Uh, I don't want it to look like community members that this is a teacher committee and we're just bringing community members in, to have them there, I'd like to have, I had kind of an equal number of people inside the district, I think, and people outside the district. But I also saw the committee as, and I didn't address this in my comments just now, but kind of twofold. We would hope that they would take information we give them and spread it around, either on Facebook or with their colleagues or their friends or their children, their families, whatever, to help communicate. Uh, we can do that on Facebook and we can do that on, uh, the website, Facebook be more effective, but I want to make sure that they felt they were listened to and they had an opportunity. And, uh, if they had, they're not the board, so they can't say you gotta do X, Y, Z, but if they had ideas that one or both of us thought was worth pursuing, we would definitely be listening for ideas, uh, to approach, uh, opening a school, or if, if things continue as bad as they are right now, how long we have to be closed. Right now, we're looking at being closed until, at the board, but I looked a minute, but I believe it was through December. So how many people would you think would, would be a workable committee size?
What, Mr. Edlund, how many do you have on your committee? Seven, I wouldn't think more than 10.
Okay. That's, that's a number that we kind of talked about. Any feeling, Ms. Moore?
I could, can you repeat the number? I couldn't hear the number.
She said she would recommend about 10 people on the committee.
Okay.
Okay.
And that would include one person from at least the safety committee that you have here?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Yeah, there'd be, Ms. Moore just asked the question if that would be, if there'd be some repetition of people who are on the school safety committee and on the, on the opening of school committee, and that would be easy to do because...
We've had something already logged.
Yeah, and plus, Mr. Edlund's on the committee, he'd be, he'd be on both committees as well.
The one thing that we're trying to avoid though is committee beating the same person over and over because we do have, let's just say half a dozen staff members that step up and volunteer all the time.
Yes.
But we don't want to overburden that same half dozen people repeatedly because, you know, there needs to be an opportunity for some other people to step up if we can encourage that from those people as well.
And I, one of the things you said that you wanted, uh, business people and community people, you're, you're talking in terms of two different.
I think, and I'd like to have a one group, so I'd like to have, I'd like to have teachers, there's a lot of fear, I can't say this about our staff because I haven't asked, but I got the feeling before the last board meeting that there was a high percentage of our teachers who wanted to continue with the online because there's some fear about the virus. And there's been some districts, there was a district in the Wayne East Valley last August that the board voted to go back to school and 100 teachers basically said, we're not coming to work. So they changed the vote pretty quickly because they couldn't replace 100 teachers a week before school started. So I think, um, when I talk to parents, I get a mixed message. Uh, when I talk to parents about some of the fears or frustrations their kids are going through, like it makes me want to start school tomorrow, but then when I see kids getting sick and so on and so forth, it makes me much, much more cautious, and, um, but one of the things we've done, this is, I'm straying from the topic just a little bit, we have a child that's really dealing with a tough time at home right now, the ones we've talked to are children whose parents, um, are, must be at work. So we can, we can house those students here per the governor, and we don't have very many, but we have a few. So a couple cases that I've recommended, we'll bring, bring your child to school, and we will have them here and so on and so forth. So I think that's helped a little bit in cases, it's not the answer, but it's better than being home alone while your parents are at work. And, uh, that's pretty scary times, I, that's pretty scary times. So we're talking about 10 people. Do you, do you think that, uh, a high school student or so should be involved, or what are your thoughts on something like that?
I think the high school students, you, I would like to have maybe two or three, but not counted into the 10. They're sort of there to listen and, you know. Two or three.
Okay.
I'd like it to be students that are in leadership positions.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, anybody have?
Experience for them.
Things that I have thought about are Chamber of Commerce, and I haven't talked to him, or Mr. Leonard, I haven't talked to him at the clinic, uh, or maybe even Lonnie at the ambulance. Lonnie and Mr. Leonard were both on the committee that Leonard and I met with in August, and I appreciate having a medical opinion, and, uh, well, neither, well, I don't know Mr. Leonard's credentials, but Lonnie's a, a paramedic, so he's, he's got some, uh, credentials. I was thinking about people like that, anybody else specifically that you would like to see, or any committee, community member, not necessarily related to their business, it's a community member that you think it would be a leader or would be someone that would be important to keep us informed because they have, they communicate with a lot of people. Anybody you'd feel strong about?
I, do you know Cheryl Langer?
Yes.
Well, Cheryl's on the, the, um, she's on the library board in Tucson for representing the, uh, this part of the county, and also on the clinic as well, and involved in other things, she's really community oriented.
Okay, yeah.
And she asked me about school and how we're going to decide everything, I think she'd be good.
She's pretty supportive.
She's very outgoing.
Yes, yes. Any other ideas, personal ideas, anybody, know anybody, um, I don't even know if the Aho, uh, West Pima County Community Council's going to be meeting this way or not, but, uh, would anybody from that western, the WPCC be, uh, should it say anybody from that group be on this, do you think?
Yeah, well, Lupe Alvarez puts it, you know, she's the one who's the president.
She's the president?
Yeah. She, I don't know, if she, she would be good, she's, but she may have some knocks on it.
Is she still the president?
I think so.
She was last year, Lauren, I believe. I hadn't been going to very many meetings last year because one person dominated all the conversations and it kind of drove me nuts. But, uh, that's not for the paper. But that's not for the paper, Andrew.
She would be a good candidate. I think so.
Okay.
She's not the president, but she, she recently was.
Do you know who is?
She's still active.
Oh, yeah. She's active in a lot of things.
Mary Pat Jenner is the president.
Who?
Mary Pat Jenner? I don't know her.
Jenny.
Jenny's.
Jenny's.
Mary Pat.
I don't know.
But there has been few.
And she's on the committee and she's also in charge of the community market down on the plaza. And seems to be involved in a number of aspects.
Oh, yeah.
She grew up here.
Oh, Mary Pat.
Yeah. She grew up here, went through school, and then they moved it. Now they're retired and come back this last year.
Kind of like Lupe and her husband.
Yeah.
What do you think about Mr. Leonard from the clinic, if he's available?
Oh, I doubt he'd be available.
Okay.
He's like super swamped right now.
Okay.
I just, I just know that with all the, with his grant writing and stuff. How about, are any of the two that you mentioned, but you can reach out to him?
Okay.
How about somebody that was in the school system?
Previously, sure.
Yeah, retired now. I mean, because they know what's going on now and.
Okay, some retired.
Know, know how it is to have kids in school and not in school.
Would Debra be interested?
I don't know.
Like Annette Yanis, maybe?
Annette Yanis would be good too.
She's a good teacher.
She's a very good teacher.
Yeah, she'd be very good.
Or Mr. Supodolow is another good teacher. Jose?
Yeah. He lives next door to me.
How about, no, who just went to the clinic? Oh, she used to run the restaurant up in town. I want to say Elaine, but it isn't. Estelle.
Oh, Estelle Bryant.
Yeah.
Estelle Bryant. If you wanted somebody from the clinic, she would probably be good. She has kids in school.
Yes. And her husband was on the board.
And she's, she's been around in the community for quite a long time.
Yeah. And she could represent the clinic that way.
Yeah, okay.
Because she's got more of an administrative position.
Do you folks think that like a three-week cycle is adequate?
I like two weeks.
I like two weeks altogether.
What do you think, Rodney? Three, two weeks?
I'm thinking three would be weird because sometimes they would be meeting, like, as far as it would drive with getting communications to us as the boards, since we do once a month, every three weeks, just be a weird stagger to it where sometimes they'd be meeting right after we met, sometimes right before we met. Even if every two weeks, it can be set up so that it's not shifting throughout the month.
We can do that. We can do that.
If they could have, if they could actually have two meetings prior to each board meeting. You know, that would be a matter of, you know, making sure the schedule is lined up. But then, you know, they could have one meeting to hash things through, another meeting to put together some sort of document or anything that to present to the board and the administration regarding their, their discussions and their concerns.
I, I don't want them overburdened with meetings.
Yeah.
That's my biggest concern, especially pulling people from outside the school, is asking-
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say.
But, I mean.
What, with Rodney, two weeks is good. Because you have to consider these people are still employed, they have their jobs, their lives and.
But isn't that two weeks? If you have, if you have two, I'm agreeing, I'm just saying that if the meetings could happen prior to the board meeting, then we would get more information in a timely manner.
I would say right now, we should be able to, with, with the ideas you folks have shared with me, we should be able to have a meeting next week. That would be my goal. Except we're missing Wednesday next week. It's Veterans Day. And I just scheduled something for Thursday. So. Yeah. So anyhow, if we did something next week, we could do what, what Ms. Robertson's saying. We have at least one meeting before the December meeting and hopefully two. We haven't talked about this, but we need to think about, Mrs. Duncan, I need to think about when to put the next vote for school opening on the agenda. And we have a short month. This month is short. We have one full week. Rest of them, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving week, and then in December, we only have really two full weeks of school because we have two weeks off for winter break. And then we, unless, my thinking is that families should know before winter break what's going to happen with school after we come back, after we come back to, on January 4th or January 6th, I can't remember where that first Monday is. So I don't really, I don't really, Leonard and I haven't even talked about this, I don't really want to vote. If nothing else, we could vote the January meeting. But I'd almost prefer to vote in the December meeting so people can plan ahead for three weeks as to what's going to happen in January. If not, we would continue with the online program until, until we had the, a January meeting. But we could get some conversation like that going with the committee too. We'll see how, how teachers react as well as parents. So, any other ideas?
From the, from the-
Go ahead, Laura, I'm sorry.
It's, it's windy.
Oh, sorry.
Back to the committee, I like that, talking about including teachers and other stakeholders in the community. But when I suggested this committee, it was as a response to all of the families that came before us last month with their concerns. And I discussed it because, I suggested it because I wanted to hear more from the families, what their concerns were, what ideas they had. And I, with all of the suggestions for stakeholder participation, expanding into teachers and students, I'm assuming as well as families, I would just hope that the majority of the members are school families. Because they, they're the ones that, that, you know, have the biggest stake, aside from teachers perhaps.
Yeah, I agree. That's a good point. Okay.
Also, the component of, I like that you're thinking of using it as a way to further communicate with, with our community. I think the more of that, the better. But I also, I, I hope this to be about the families and the community sharing their concerns with us and not the other way around, not, not a forum for, though it, though it helps to have a, an administrator there to explain, you know, what is going on. They, they are there because they want to be heard. And I, I want to make sure that that is the primary focus of the committee and, and I, I hope that that's agreed. I hope, I, I feel like that might be a little bit getting lost here.
I think that's, I agree. There's no point of having a committee unless you're going to get input from the members or the participants. I think one of the things you may see is depending on the proportion of staff to parents or staff to parents to community members. You may see, it may be, it may be enlightening to various groups of stakeholders how the other groups feel. Teach, pardon me, teachers are going to have one viewpoint for the most part. Parents want their children safe and back in school, so that may not be totally aligned. Community members are going to be, want to do whatever, whatever's good for their employees and keeping employees and also helping promote safety and, and business, I assume. So I think that it should be an interesting discussion, I hope, I would hope. So, give me ideas. Is there anything?
No, I mean, I think, I think it's important-
So I, I under- Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was, I was just going to say, I think it's just important that we have a good, well-balanced group so that we can hear input and perspective from many different points of view. Because while we sit here and we may think we know how the different, how the different points of view are going to come across, we may be completely surprised. That's why we have to approach this with an open mind and, and take everybody's input and put those together and try and form some type of common, common ground where we all feel like, okay, we're truly making the best decision for our students, number one, but for our staff and our community as a whole. I think that's the most important thing is to really gather that information from many different perspectives. And that's why I think it's really important that, that we form a, a well-balanced.
Could you possibly, like Wendy wants a lot of the parents on there, but can the parents have a meeting first and discuss what they are concerned about and then have a couple of parents just represent them and then come back to the main committee that they have?
Yeah. I could contact the parents that came to the, the board meeting. It's hard to say who is the leader. But I know Malin Junior Lewis was strong spoke, I think his wife and he both spoke. Pardon me?
His kids aren't enrolled.
I know. There's a couple of the children weren't enrolled.
Have you been, have you been in contact with Pulp or Miras at all? Because I understand that, that she has been in contact with some of the other parents about this exact thing.
She's in the audience tonight.
No, I, she-
Oh, she is?
She doesn't spoke with me yet.
I don't know because I can't see you.
She hasn't spoken with me yet, but I, I do know a staff member said, said that they'd asked her to contact me. So I'm sure Paula and I will be speaking very soon.
I have, I have contacted, I don't know if I talked enough, but I have personally contacted everybody that attended that meeting, that board meeting and who spoke out at that meeting. And, and as well as other members, whether their kids are enrolled or not enrolled. Because some of those parents are considering re-enrolling their children. So I have talked to them personally about forming the committee where it's, it's mostly led by parents with concerns, not only complaints and concerns, but suggestions as well that we would like to bring to the board attention. So I have reached out to probably six or seven individuals within the community. And they, they are very vocal people within the community. So Trish Olson, Mr. Moore, Sarah Burgess, Margana, Ms. Kotay, Ms. Small, Kara Stocker. I reached out, I can't think of whoever, I can pull my email, but I've already, you know, contacted those individuals on my own.
So those concerns are something that we'll bring forward to Dr. Edlin myself?
Yeah.
Good, thank you, thank you. Okay. So what I'm hearing, if, if I'm correct, is perhaps before we formally organize the committee is have, invite parents that were at the board meeting that night for an informal meeting. I say informal, it's not a board meeting, so it wouldn't be posted. But have a meeting to say, let's kind of summarize and list your biggest concerns and how it relates to health of kids and nausea, all that kind of stuff. Basically have them talk to Leonard or I, and Leonard and I. Is that what I'm hearing from people? Okay. And then maybe take it into a committee and say, who here would like to represent the parents to be part of this committee? Okay.
And then they could report back to the committee. You can't have everybody there.
Yeah.
Can I do know one or two of the people you mentioned who probably are on this, can you run your own?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I'll mention this again, probably a superintendent's report this week, but Mr. Edlin and I are going to do another, another town hall on the 12th to talk about several things. And obviously, school reopening is something that's important to all of us. Our keeping kids and staff safe is number one and hoping how to do that with a safe, a safe procedure. One of the things I, yeah, I'm getting off on a tangent. I want to keep kids and staff safe, that's my main goal. So. Anything else, folks?
I'm sorry, Dr. Julie, could you just briefly recap the plan for forming the committee? Because I was having-
You're having headphone issues, right?
Hearing everything.
Here's what I'm thinking about. From what I heard you all say is contact the parents that seem to be, starting with the people that came to the podium a week ago, a month ago tonight, or whatever the board meeting was in, in October, that were strongly urging us to reopen. Contact those people, set up a meeting with them to talk to Leonard and I about what their beliefs, desires, needs are, they think. And then ask them to put someone from that group in a committee, in the larger committee that would consist of teachers, two or three high school kids, maybe a business person or two, and then several parents. From what I'm hearing, parents and teachers are, the board would feel strong about having that be the major portion of the committee than business people. Am I hearing that correct, folks? Okay.
Well, I think maybe if it's a business person but a parent
Yeah.
and goes to work, that might kind of take care of both.
I hear you.
So that would like eliminate, eliminate like having-
Yeah. So we could have some, one person, what you're suggesting, Laura, is that it's almost like having a teacher, it's also a parent. We've got a number of those. We've got about-
Yes, or even, like I mentioned, a retired teacher knows how it is for kids to be out of school. But they know how it is, how hard it is for them to be learning outside of school. And we know it all better than we would from a classroom.
I agree.
But, I mean, safety is going to be the first thing here for the kids.
Yeah, I agree.
And I mean, just as you mentioned, these schools started, I mean, I don't have exact numbers, but six, six schools here in Chandler, in the very public county, are shut down after two weeks because their numbers of COVID have skyrocketed way, way high in two weeks that they were back in classes. And that's just why I'm scared into the navel.
One of the things I worry about, there's a plethora of things, but one of the things I worry about is we're approaching, in my world, the holiday season of the year with Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
And I'm afraid that that may exacerbate the increase in the percentage of people testing positive. I don't know. I don't know that, but I'm even thinking about it for Thanksgiving. I've got two events. I'm thinking, well, I got eight people or less at both events, so that's kind of good. But still, they're all coming from eight different places.
But it's true.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, people, families will be getting together, flying out, traveling. You know, it's time to get, to get together for, for Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Right.
And some families are just going to say, oh, we're just family, but still get together no matter what. And that's, that's surely what everyone's going to do because you can't, you can't avoid that.
Correct, correct.
And one thing that occurs to me, based on the holidays coming up and the timeline, is that if you were, we've been mentioned that maybe at the December board meeting, we just, that's when we vote on opening in January. At the December board meeting, we're not even going to really know what the impact was of the Thanksgiving holiday on the
True.
COVID numbers locally, let alone the Christmas day.
I would like to wait. I just don't want people to think I'm ignoring the board vote. So if we could-
Can I, I, I feel like I need to interrupt- Can I, I, I feel like I need to interrupt here. This is a discussion I actually requested and my request was ignored. We can't have discussions on things that are not listed on the agenda. We're in violation of open meeting law.
It's on the agenda.
No, a discussion of the committee is on the agenda, not COVID issues.
The discussion of when the committee meets and what the committee recommends is on the agenda. But I, your point is.
This is, this is going, this is going into much broader territory than when the committee meets.
Is your point the fact that we shouldn't discuss the vote or when to vote? Because it's on the agenda, Wendy?
When to vote? No, no. We're having broader discussions on COVID numbers and what the holidays are going to do. That, that is not, that's in violation of open meeting law. That is not on the agenda. I would love that to be like on the agenda and I asked for it. But it is not on the agenda. And I'm going to ask for it again, that it be on the agenda on Wednesday night.
Next month, ask me before the board books go out. Next month, ask me before the board books go out.
My bringing up COVID numbers was simply a matter of looking at when we make the vote. If we make it at the December meeting or if we wait until later in December when we have a better picture of what it is.
Yeah, we can have a special.
Start a discussion on what the COVID numbers are now, but to look at scheduling of the meeting based on what could happen over holidays.
Yeah. Okay, back to the committee. Let me reiterate what I think we've said to see if we're all on the same page. We want to have a mixture of teachers, parents, some students and maybe some representatives of the business world. Around 10 people plus kids on the committee. Suggestions have been made are Cheryl Langer, who's a community member who's been very involved in the community and the school, Lupi Alvarez or Mary Pat Jenny, who with Whoopsie Board, someone from the clinic, maybe someone from the newspaper, maybe retired teacher. And then the parent part is a two-stage process. From what I'm hearing, is first of all, have Leonard and I try to encourage parents, especially those parents who were at the board meeting last month that went to the podium and asked that we reopen school, have those, those parents there and talk about their, their concerns, their desires, their beliefs, whatever we want to call that, and their positions, a better word. And then ask for a couple or three representatives from that group to serve on the committee that reports to the board, maybe in January or late December. Does that sound, does that pretty well summarize what we've said, folks?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Anything else you want? Any other directions on the committee formation? Or, and we're looking at trying to do this every two weeks. And so what we would probably do in the past, we did this like, not, not at night, but we did it like at 4:30, quarter to 5:00. So we tried to catch people at the end of the day. So we weren't out here till eight or nine o'clock at night. But we'd get started and we'd get some people. If they want to get home before dinner, that'd be a possibility too. So anyway, we will, I will, I will write this up as a part of this week's board letter. And I will, and my note to myself is start calling people tomorrow. And we'll start, I'll start trying to set up the parent group first. And I'll start selecting teachers and some kids. With Lawrence help tomorrow as well. So I want to be able to have at least a parent meeting by next week. Maybe have both meetings next week if I could. Some, that's going to be tough with Veterans Day, but we want to get this ball started because I, it's, 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 time's moving. We want to make a decision that's sound for people. Any ideas?
I add that it's, it sounds like Paul Ramirez has done quite a lot of work with moving in that direction, talking to families that might want to be involved. And I know you said you were going to talk, talk to some families, but I would like to see as many of those people.